... board of Alderman Dor, roll call please.
Alderman Gorman.
Here.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Maglan.
Here.
Alderman Laura.
Here.
Alderman Ward.
Here.
Matt, uh, present.
Alright, we have a form of speech which can't take place. Uh, we're showing the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, consent agenda. And agenda, the information in your packet.
Hi, we're here to cycle. The, in the general government, it's the second page. The economic department, first line. It says after the resignation, you have more projects after the, the my projects.
Questions or comments?
I'm pretty much on every exception. The, uh, other than this, the board of-
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Oop, sorry. Alright, I have a motion of second to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Council table over twelve fifty.
I motion accept the council table over twelve fifty. Uh, five thirty-five, five hundred thirty-five thousand and fifty-four dollars. Maybe that's six.
Sir.
How about five thirty-seven?
You play three seven.
Yeah. One out of the day.
Oh. Yeah. Didn't get my update.
Paul, when do mine?
It's, uh-
That's okay. Whatever there's an, well, problem.
We, we added the bill from, from like a four.
Okay. Five thirty-seven, uh, seventy-nine, sixty-seven cents.
Second. I have a motion of second to accept the council table over four hundred fifty dollars. You amount five hundred thirty-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Comments from citizens? Open the floor for comments from citizens. Okay. Hearing none. Close the comments from citizens. Presentation of audit for fiscal year two thousand thirteen and fourteen by Williams Cooper. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks. I'm Heidi Chick. I'm the audit partner for the audit. And I drop with me so you could see there's someone else that works on your count, Amanda Schultz. Uh, she's the audit supervisor that's here day to day, works closely with Lynn and Heather. Uh, so we're glad to be here. Uh, glad to make the last presentation for Lynn. You won't have to listen to us again, so.
Always a pleasure.
So you should have both, uh, you should have three things in front of you. One is the handout, which is what I'm gonna go through. But you should also have a thicker spiral bound that says reported city of Centralia. That's the actual audit with the financial statements. And then there's a, a thinner spiral bound that has two additional reports in there. So I'm gonna pick the highlights on each one. You probably have not had a chance to go through these at any length. So if you, uh, go through them later and have any questions, just let me know. I'll be glad to get back with you. Uh, we're kinda hot off the cuff, so I know you really haven't had a chance to look at them. Does that can go up on the screen?
Yes.
You can make a little.
The rabbit ears. Well, they're-
I tell you, they also turn it on.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But she's not playing it.
You know, it's like emailing to Heather so I wouldn't have to do this and look at IT and conference. We have IT people in our office that do this for us. And this, this is what you have on your handouts too. So whichever is easier for you to look at. Go ahead and click through the first three slides. The first three slides really are just some information, uh, about, uh, me, Amanda and Kelly. We're the ones that head up the audit. A little bit of information on our government team. Uh, I know you've seen this before, but government audits are a material that we focus on. Uh, we send our staff to training. We focus a lot of attention on it so that the team that we send out to field knows what they're doing. They know governmental accounting. They know how to do your financial statements. So it's just, uh, a little bit of background about us as a firm. The initial reports as a result of the audit. One's an opinion on the financial statements. And that's in that thicker spiral bound notebook. And then a communication to you, uh, the board of Alderman. We call you those charged with governance because you're the one that has the ultimate responsibility. And then the management layer. So we'll hit the highlights of each one of those three reports. Governmental financial statements are very different than other financial statements that you might see for any other type of industry. You know, they're different than a bank, they're different than a manufacturer. So I've listed the components there just so you have an idea of what is in that, uh, thicker spiral bound notebook. Uh, there's actually six components, if I count right, or seven. One is the independent auditors report. We'll touch on that. Management's discussion and analysis, we'll touch on that. And that's the part that Lynn actually does. There's actually two sets of financial statements and a government set of financial statements. One's called a government-wide and one is called fund financial statements. And that's what's really makes governmental state, uh, statements stand apart because you actually got two full sets of statements in there. The government-wide puts everything in the city together, shows all your assets, including your capital assets, your long-term debt. Those are the statements that are most like everybody else in the world. And there's basically a balance sheet. It's called a statement net position, shows your assets liabilities. And then a statement of activities is basically your income statement. But that's really, like I said, everything all put together in one spot. And really it's full accrual, shows everything related to the city. The fund financial statements then are the funds that you're used to seeing on a regular monthly basis. Uh, and so there's actually two sets of fund financial statements. One's called governmental funds, one's called enterprise funds. And really the biggest difference is governmental funds are things that are supported by taxes. Basically, sales tax, property tax, you know, public safety, streets, all that type of stuff. Those are recorded in the governmental fund statements. The proprietary funds are your utilities where you charge fees to users. You're trying to make sure that the fees you charge cover the cost of operation. So there's a lot of sets of statements in there. And it's easy to get confused if you're not used to looking at. So if we go back through the slide, this is an attempt to help you, uh, keep straight in your mind what's in there. Notes to the financial statements, uh, required supplementary information. There's certain information where we're required to include, and then some other supplementary information. So we'll just kinda hit the highlights of these as we go. If you have any questions, just let me know. The independent auditors report is the one thing that's totally our responsibility in, in here. And we look at it every year just because I think it's important that you recognize that. But it's on the page that looks like this. It's on our letterhead, like two or three pages in. And when you read through it, you'll see that there's, uh, titles and stuff. So it's really pretty easy to find stuff in there. But it does cover management's responsibility, uh, which is you guys, basically the city. Uh, that you're responsible for the preparation of their presentation, presentation of financial statements. And you're also responsible for having internal control process and procedure so that you can produce accurate financial statements. So that's management's responsibility, your responsibility. Our responsibility is to follow auditing standards to figure out how we're gonna audit and give an opinion on the financial statements. And when we do that, we go through what we call a risk assessment process. Uh, we talk to different people. We gain an understanding of how transaction flows, who approves what, who looks at different things, try and figure out something, we're gonna go wrong, where would it go wrong? And that's where we focus our attention. So we don't look at every check, we don't look at every deposit. But we go through and try and figure out where most likely, uh, could something happen? And that's where we look at. Uh, so at the end, we think that all the work that we've done, all the procedures we've performed, are enough to give an opinion on the financial statements. Uh, the opinion, which is at, I think, the top of the second page. That's really the most important thing. Uh, it's an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. That's the best opinion you can get. And what that means is all, all the statements that I just talked about are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with that. So that's really what you wanna have, a clean opinion. And then, uh, there was a change in accounting principles, so there's a little bit of information on that. And then there's some other matters where it talks about what we did related to the supplementary information. But I think it is important to understand that you are responsible for the financial statements. You're the one that authorized the transactions, did, recorded them, all that type of activity, even though we actually prepared the financial statements. And then it's our responsibility to audit, then we give an opinion. So any questions on the auditors' report at all? Same one that you saw last year, so no, no real change in that other than the change in accounting principle. Oh, sorry. Uh, one, one of the things I'd like to go over, and we won't go through everything, is to understand basis of accounting. Basis of accounting means when do you recognize a transaction and record it in the financial statements? So it's kinda broken out because it's different depending upon what statement you're looking at. Really, the governmental activity and the government-wide statements, remember, those are the statements that put everything together. And then the proprietary funds, the business-type activities, they're all on what's called accrual basis of accounting. It means when someone owes you money, you recognize it. It may be receivable, but you do recognize it when, when, uh, you provide the service. If you think, if you bought something, uh, you recognize expense when you've incurred that. So it's, it's accrual basis accounting. The governmental funds have a little, uh, unusual quirk to them. Has to do with revenue recognition. If you don't collect your revenue within sixty days, you don't recognize it. So if someone owes you property taxes, you don't collect it by the end of March, I think it is, you don't recognize his revenue. So that's the only quirk. So I think it is important to understand when you recognize stuff in the financial statements. And that is what this slide covers.
Heidi, the year-end, is that the end of our fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
It's at the end of your fiscal year. So if you sent out, uh, utility billings from March, nobody's paid you in March because they're not gonna pay the day they get it probably.
Right.
But you do recognize that it's revenue receivable because you did provide those services. And then you turn around and collect it in April. But it is as of year, year-end. Management's discussion analysis, Lynn writes this. Uh, we read through it, make sure it's consistent, like he does with all of it. It's in plain English. It's intended for anybody to read through and understand what went on with the city during the year. And it's like, uh, but it is-
It's a loose definition of plain English.
Well, that may be, but, but it's intended to be something you can read. And it's really the only place that compares this year to last year. It's the only place that's fully comparative in the financial statements. So it goes through the financial statement highlights, kind of an overview of the statements, what's in there, uh, different, uh, types of financial analysis, and goes through economic and other factors. So I always tell everybody, you really should read the entire set of financial statements because, like I said earlier, they're your responsibility. If you read nothing else, this is what you should read because it is the story of what went on during the past fiscal year. And Lynn does a good job of, of writing it. The government-wide statements, uh, there's a new accounting standard that we implemented, so they will look a little bit different than last year. Uh, it's broken into governmental activities and business-type activities. So if you actually look at the actual statement, you'll see columns. The governmental activities, we talked a little bit about it. Those are things that are basically supported by taxes and are pretty typical for a city to provide, like public safety. The business-type activities are for the most part your utilities. Full accrual basis of accounting. And it's broken out, you can see there really was not any significant changes in assets or liabilities or anything during the year. Some, some stuff went up and went down, uh, but not any huge changes. So I've put it on these slides so you can see this year compared to last year pretty easily. Uh, when it talks about net position, that's basically your equity. You have your assets, the stuff that you own. You have your liabilities, the stuff that you owe to other people. And the difference between the two is equity. Uh, and here it's called net position, but it's equity. Statement of activities, like I said earlier, that's basically your income statement. Shows the revenue that you got in, the expenditures that you paid. And again, I've kinda compared this year to last year so that it's really easy to see on this slide. Lynn also has comments in the management discussion analysis for you to look at. So I've compared revenue by general types, uh, the governmental and business-type expenses, and then net income by governmental and business-type. But again, not any huge changes from last year. I do have some comments on, up there on what did change, but nothing, nothing really huge. So those two statements are the government-wide statements. And again, that's where all your capital assets are recorded, all your debts recorded. It's the place you're most likely to miss the world. Any questions on those statements? The governmental fund statements, we're not gonna go through these in any great detail. There's four statements. There's a balance sheet and an income statement for the governmental funds. And then there's a reconciliation that takes the fund statements up to those government-wide statements. These are the same statements that have been in there every year. So if you've looked at them in prior years, basically, they're, they're same ones this year. Uh, really no significant changes from prior year, uh, other than we implemented that new P S B standard. And it wasn't a huge deal. The proprietary fund statements, they also implemented that new standard. Uh, it also has a balance sheet, statement of net position, income statement. This also has a statement of cash flows. It converts all that accrual activity into cash in, cash out, and then puts it in buckets. So you can tell the cash that you collected from operating activities, uh, the cash that you spent on investment-type activities. So it's, it's where you can see all the cash that came in in those various categories. And that's on page twenty-four. And then I, if you go back and read, I got a couple of comments on it under the bullet. And if there were any significant changes or anything like that. Any questions on the fund statements? I'm going through those that are pretty highlighted, but I think you guys can go back and look at them later. The fiduciary fund statements, that's where you're holding money for the benefit of, of somebody else. And in this case, it's a library. You collect the library taxes and you turn around and remit them over. So there's statements that talk about that the balances and activity related to that. Those are called fiduciary fund statements.
Also would apply to, uh, chance mausoleum fund.
To?
The chance mausoleum fund.
Okay. Notes to the financial statement, uh, several pages long. You tend not to like them, but they really explain again what's in the financial statements. Again, explains, uh, the basis of accounting, when you recognize stuff. There's also information in there on your, your tax levies. There's information in there on your capital assets. There's information in there on your debt. So it is really good to explain, uh, what you see in the financial statements because numbers don't tell the entire story. So the notes are intended to expand those numbers. Uh, pretty consistent with last year. Uh, we've noted a couple that were revised. There was a prior period adjustment really related to that, uh, implementation of that new standard, so. No one is where all your accounting policies are, so it's the longest one, but it runs through everything. Uh, really, other than that new standard, no change in the footnotes for entire years, other than being updated. And you can see they're twenty-some pages long, so there's a lot there. Supplementary information, we're not gonna go through that. But there's basically the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. There's some information on the pension plan, on loggers, on the funding progress. Uh, and then there's combining balance sheet and income statement for the, the smaller funds. That basically constitutes your financial statements. Any questions at all on the financial statements? And like I said, I know you haven't had a chance to really read them, so if you have questions later, I'd be glad to answer them. The next two reports are in the second spiral bound, uh, notebook. One is called a communication to the board of Alderman. We go through, again, our responsibility, our gromics have been auditing standards to talk to a little bit about the, the planning and the timing of the audit. The significant audit findings is there's really no change in accounting policies other than the implementation of the new standards. Uh, anytime you do something at a point in time, we've talked about this in the past, you have estimates. You know how much cash is in the bank, it's pretty, pretty well known. How long your buildings are gonna last, uh, how much of your utility billings you're gonna actually collect. Those are estimates, uh, so we look at those. Uh, we think the disclosures are, are clear, consistent, uh, neutral. So we think that they're appropriate for your financial statements. Uh, the best thing is, you know, really no difficulties in working with the city staff in doing the audit. We ask them to get stuff ready for us, uh, you know, take time out during their day to, to help us through stuff. And everyone is really cooperative with us throughout the process. Uh, we did assist, again, this year with some adjusting entries. Uh, and we'll meet with, with Matt and then Heather and Lynn to talk about those for next year. Uh, but really, other than that, the audit goes pretty smoothly and, and no disagreements with management. Any questions on that report? Several pages long, but that's the gist of it. Management layer is the last report that we do. Uh, like I said earlier, we go through a risk assessment process to figure out how we're gonna audit the city. And to do that, we gave an understanding of how stuff works. We don't do enough work to give an opinion on internal control, so we don't do that. Obviously, we're gonna notice stuff as we're doing our audit procedure. So when we do that, uh, we call those deficiencies. It just means there's a break either in the design of the system or you didn't file the system. So if we notice a deficiency, we then evaluate how big a deal it is. The most serious one is called a material weakness. It just means there's a reasonable possibility that something could happen. And if it did happen, it could be material. So it doesn't mean anything's materially wrong. It just means the possibility is there that it could be. Uh, and we have that related to the preparation of financial statements. And that was really mainly related to some of the adjustments that we posted this year. And so that's one of the reasons that we'll work with, uh, Matt and Heather and Lynn to address next year. Uh, Lynn and Heather go through the financial statements, are fully capable of reading them, making sure everything is right. So it's really kind of mainly focused on some of the adjustments that we did this year. A significant deficiency just means it's something we think you need to know about. It's not a material weakness, so it's not as serious as that. But we just feel like you need to know about it. And that's related to the network access to the primary fire utility billing software. And it's basically, everyone has access to it. When you're a small entity, it's hard because you gotta be able to serve your customers when they walk in the door. So sometimes it's really hard to have really what you ideally should have, the segregation of duties. So we're just reporting it to you that everyone has access to that. There may not be a significant amount you can do. I know Lynn in the past has looked at like utility adjustments just to make sure there's nothing unusual there. So there's some mitigating things you can, can do to offset that.
I know you just said everybody has access to it at the same time, but I thought that only one person could be in the system at any given time.
Not in the utility billing system. There, at any given time, we could have three different people. One person looking at the customer account, one person posting payments in the front counter, one person posting payments that came in through the, um, depository. So at any point in time, we could have, everybody could be in there. And then the night could be running reports at the same time that they're doing all of that. So, uh, it is, it's possible, I mean, yeah.
Thank you.
And again, it doesn't mean anything did happen. It just means-
Right.
-you know about it.
And Heidi, I think you've said something along those lines in the past, uh, and, and this is not a new issue. This is something that, that the city is aware of, but it's chosen because of what you just said, limitations because of the size and that kind of thing, not to adjust anything.
Right, you have to look at the cost benefit of anything that you do. And you just may not be able to fix this, but you should be aware of that. And all that really means is then Lynn and now Matt really has to look at the reports, which they do. You have to make sure you look at the reports. And if you see anything, you need to make sure you ask questions. So it just really raises the level of review that you need to provide is all. But you're right, it's pretty typical for us. And even the preparation of financial statements is pretty typical for a smaller entity that has limited staff and, you know, they're focused on doing their day-to-day stuff and not on keeping up with accounting standards. Even that's pretty typical.
Thank you.
We had some other recommendations that, uh, we'll probably talk with Heather and Matt about having to do with, with the fund accounting issues. There's just some quirky things that your software's doing that makes life a little more difficult than it needs to be. We didn't feel it. Method definition of significant deficiency because you can work around it is just something we need to look at for next year. So again, what we reported, you, you need to know. But again, it's pretty typical for a smaller entity. And it really just raises, you just need to be aware of it so you pay closer attention to reports that you look at. Is really the, the bottom line. Any questions on that, any of the reports whatsoever? Otherwise, we really appreciate the cooperation that we get during the audit. We know it's not easy. Uh, it's a lot of work, uh, and we do appreciate all the cooperation we get. And we certainly appreciated all the cooperation Lynn's given us over the years, uh, when we're coming every year. He appreciates the time to answer our questions and, and work with us. So we definitely wish him the best. Otherwise, we really thank you for the opportunity to do that.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, would you appropriate a motion for that to, uh?
Go ahead, motion.
So move.
I have a motion and second to accept the audit by Williams Cooper. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, take it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
What's quite the form of that?
The equivalent of just a quick, right?
Right. Take no, no work home to say. Alright, public hearing. Propose voluntary annexation of property by Thomas Patton and R. Eugene Patton. Did you receive any written comment for or against current audit?
I have received no comments of any sort. And I will offer the record that the planning and zoning commission also have a public hearing and recommend approval of the tenant section.
Okay. Zoning for land proposed for long-term annexation by Thomas Patton and R. Eugene Patton. Any comments for or against that?
Same case as for the annexation itself. No comments of any sort. And a recommendation by planning and zoning commission that the property be zoned B2, which is consistent with the majority of the property around it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Eddie? Eddie? Okay, so close the public hearing. Chamber of Commerce report?
You ready?
Action agenda?
Yes.
My name's, nothing scheduled?
Now, suit the case.
Permit's license, same thing?
Same, thank you.
Alright, we know.
As I previously explained, committee, we've been asked to participate in the preparation of an update of the county hazard mitigation program planning. Uh, we've done that once before and subsequently adopted that plan as our own.
Okay.
Having the plan is condition of receiving certain types of federal assistance, so it is necessary. Most of the work will be done by the regional planning commission. There is a match requirement, but as with the last time, uh, we should be able to devote mostly Matt's time to fulfilling that requirement.
You sound like you're taking too much questions.
Exactly. I think he's had a chance to look at last time.
Alright.
Give a stick.
A whole lot of it is for things that don't affect us.
Don't knock the cartoons.
That's how you know it's a good report is, you know, it makes a good tub and it lands on the desk.
Excellent. You sound the best.
Uh, I, it, it, so in summary, it's mandatory and we should agree to, uh, participate. Participate. And we should, uh, make Mr. Arline, the city's, uh, in such participation.
Okay.
We have resolutions.
Yes.
Just-
Everyone find a, uh, resolutions in their packet? In the, uh, second, second packet, like, page number, part two, page sixty-six? Alderman Maglan, would you introduce this one, please?
Um, bill number?
Twenty-seven thirteen.
Move the bill number twenty-seven, what, sixteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Be given a reading, first reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and second to give, uh, bill number twenty-seven thirteen its first and only reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, continue the way.
A bill to create a resolution entitled, the resolution of inter- intend to participate in the planning process for a five-year update of the boom counting hazardous-
Mitigation.
Mitigation plan. Uh, move that bill number be adopted by roll call vote.
I have a motion and second to bill number twenty-seven thirteen be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, roll call vote please, head of.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Maglan?
Yes.
Alderman Laura?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkin?
Four.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alright, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven thirteen passes and now becomes resolution number-
R dash one four dash oh seven.
Alright. All right. Next is a bill authorizing deed of inheritance by City of Centralia, Missouri, of a small tract of land to Stephen V. Albert and Deborah S. Albert. Says ordinance requires two readings. And if you remember the discussion from last week, it's the strip land area next to the Albert shooting refer. It's part of the parking, city parking lot to land. Right. And I, I was, I was asking Lynn about the ownership of that, and the city didn't become the owner until nineteen ninety-four, but what I was remembering is that we leased the property before that.
For ten, fifteen years, I believe.
All right. Alderman Gorman, would you introduce this one, please?
Sure. Bill number please.
Twenty-seven fourteen.
I have a motion that, something, the bill number twenty-seven fourteen to give it a first reading by title only.
I have a motion and second to bill number twenty-seven fourteen to give it a first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
Bill, uh, a bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centralia, Missouri, to execute a loss-let deed to Stephen V. Albert and Deborah S. Albert husband and wife, convey a small tract of land to them in Centralia, Missouri. I move the bill number twenty-seven fourteen to give the second reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion and second to bill number twenty-seven fourteen to give it a second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk of the city of Centralia, Missouri, to execute a loss-let deed to Stephen V. Albert and Deborah S. Albert husband and wife, convey a small tract of land to them in Centralia, Missouri. I move the bill number twenty-seven fourteen be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion and second to bill number twenty-seven fourteen be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote please, Senator.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Borah?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven fourteen passes, and now becomes ordinance number- Changing the name of Fairgrounds Road in the city of Centralia to Fairgrounds Street. This ordinance requires two readings.
As you recall, you passed the resolution that you intended to do this, it was published in the paper. We have public hearing, we have weighted requisite time, and now we could pass an ordinance to actually do legal change, after which, to use a certified copy of the ordinance to take down and have recorded with the county, and I will provide nine-one-one with a copy so they can adjust their records. And this originally came from the request of nine-one-one, so that we can eliminate duplication on this piece, and structure that could easily be used before.
Alderman Borah, would you introduce this one, please?
Yes. Bill number twenty-seven fifteen. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifteen be given its first reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion and second to bill number twenty-seven fifteen be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
A bill to create ordinance entitled, an ordinance to change the name of Fairgrounds Road in the city of Centralia, Missouri to Fairgrounds Street.
Two minutes.
Fairground.
Fairgrounds Street. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifteen be given its second reading by title only.
Second. I have a motion and second to bill number twenty-seven fifteen to give it a second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continue, please.
A bill to create an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to change the name of Fairgrounds Road in the city of Centralia, Missouri to Fairgrounds Street. I move that bill number twenty-seven fifteen be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a motion and second to bill number twenty-seven fifteen be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote please, Senator.
Alderman Ward?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Borah?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-seven fifteen passes, and now becomes ordinance number-
Twenty-seven seventy-eight.
Purchasing, nothing scheduled?
Will, you can take it up here, or you can take it up under as may arise, if you're discretion.
Well, I don't know. Does anybody see what we're talking about? The extrication tool for the fire department.
Didn't pass law number, to me, didn't pass law two, if you're in the neighborhood of seventy-five million dollars.
Okay, was that in our packet?
No. This was-
The picture is.
They should have nice colored pictures that-
It's part three.
Fill us in. This is a refurbished, factory refurbished tool, which is why it's so cheap. We had budgeted eight thousand dollars for it. Comes with a warranty from a company vendor venture. It's a firmly regularly buy hoses from, and Benny spotted it and immediately contacted them, and it was far superior to anything else he had been able to identify, because he was the first one to contact them. They're holding it for him, but not for an indefinite period of time. Therefore, we respectfully request you authorize the fire department to buy this re-accor-, refurbished tool from the vendor, I'll have to get this out and the name from Benny, and the exact amount, but it be within budget and authorize him with staff oversight to go ahead and purchase it.
Okay.
That's a bit vague, I'm sorry. But anything better, but if we delay for regular meeting when I have that hard information, it won't be there anymore.
Okay. So, all right, I have a motion and second to allow the purchase of this tool by the fire department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you. You want to give them the good news, Jim?
All right. Old business. Any old business you want to discuss? New business? I do have one reappointment to make tonight, as that confirmation from Jim Cockwitz, the chairman of the tree board.
John.
John Cockwitz. And Jeff Bredeau has agreed to be reappointed to the tree board. So I'm thinking, I think it's a three-year term, is that right?
I don't know, it's not five years, it's not three years. It's all right. It's only a little. It will be a three-year term.
Three. So I'd like to appoint Jeff Bredeau, reappoint Jeff Bredeau to the tree board for a three-year term, and in twenty-seventeen. I have a motion and second to accept the mayor's appointment of Jeff Bredeau to the tree board for a three-year term. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, new business, any aldermen have new business? There are none? Lynn?
I have none of business. It's going way present.
Oh, very good. All right, Mary, it's your turn.
I didn't know whether the police department has anything to report regarding the chief.
Besides the fact he's married, and he said he'd be back tomorrow. Sorry, tell me.
That's pretty big news.
He did say that.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Heather?
I did send out an email about MML registrations, and if you respond to that, would you all pay into attend, please let me know, and I'll get you registered, and-
Remember the dates.
September fourteenth through seventeenth.
Fourteenth. I'm trying to remember. I think that one. Yes, okay. All right, as may arise.
Yes, I have a couple things. One is, I discussed this once before, and I will pass out some more of these.
I got mine from last time.
And we have, Epic is, the sales tax vote is in two weeks, and it could potentially help out Centralia in two ways. One is buy some ranch farm that would help our park out, and two would be possibly some economic development funds to help develop streets or sewers that would open up industrial areas for us. I'm thinking that red off-road might be a good place to start on that, don't you mind? So this is something I could make a benefit from, so I would like to point that out. Remember, two weeks from today is the election. The second thing I want to bring up, Lynn has a retirement coming up, and while he would just soon prefer to go home, we're not going to let him off quite that easily. So there will be a retirement party on July thirty-first out at the country club, and we would like to see everybody there.
Nothing, it just happens to be his birthday.
And that happens to be his birthday, and he said, well, you know, I can celebrate my birthday at home, and I says, we can help you celebrate that there also. So, all right. While, while he might like to go out a little bit more quietly, we won't permit that. Yes, sir.
Could Epic in any way benefit the Centralia Fairgrounds?
Possibly. It has to be, it goes through a government entity such as the city, but there are ways of handling things like that.
We could be a sponsor.
There, there's possibilities there.
Kind of like we sponsored the Lance Stone.
It's much less complicated than it is now.
All right. Dude?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any other as may arise?
Doesn't like you to give me a last minute speech or anything?
I guess, that'd be a-
Are you now recommending that?
Don't like speech.
Thank you for a wonderful-
All right.
If nothing else, I owe my lovely wife to the fact that I was employed by the city of Centralia.
All right.
Thank the city, thank Alderman Poppick at the park. Serendipity helps.
All right. Very good. Well, we will surely miss you. I know, but miss your, miss your presence at the meetings.
Oh, he's still past the company.
Oh, no. Yeah.
You don't?
Yeah. Anything else from anybody?
And make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Lynn. Thank you.